I want to apologize for getting the meeting here again. I'm doing extensive work at the council chambers at City Hall. And for the good, when it's all said and done. So I'm going to go forward and say something. With that, clerk please call the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Present.
Councilwoman Acosta?
Present.
Councilwoman Tigeroa?
Present.
Councilwoman Fonseca? Councilwoman Z.
Present.
Councilwoman Rivera? Councilwoman Solana?
Present.
We have four, Mr. President.
Well, please rise to the plate.
And to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, in the world with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of minor changes. I'd like to move the minutes of the meeting to just prior to good and welfare. And I'd like to move, we have one claim tonight. Officer Rodriguez. I'd like to move that. Yeah, we're going to move it to seven C. Right after the executive communications. If he's here or not. So with that.
Clerk, who's there, sign up for public call. We have three people sign up for public call. Mr. President, first one is Vernea Carter.
Thank you. Can you bring your chair?
Hi, Moxie.
What do you want?
One percent.
Hi, I'm Vernea Carter. I live at 52 Rose Street, Central Falls Apartment 2. I am a registered voter. And I'm here because I know that you have two applicants for our tobacco license. And I know it's a dilemma because New York Deli has tobacco products. But they didn't have a license and they were, and you know, they got in trouble for two things. And that one was defense. I came prepared to ask for consideration for them because Walgreens is a pharmacy. I know they bought out Rite Aid. And when they bought out Rite Aid, the license wasn't transferred. So you know, it is a conflict for pharmacies to sell tobacco due to the fact that they distribute medication. That's one of the biggest reasons why CBI doesn't want tobacco free. So I don't know. You know, I'm wearing a dilemma here. I don't want to see a store that's not following all the rules get a license. I could kind of support New York Deli if it was just, you know, they didn't get the license, they paid the client less per month probation. And I don't know if you can do that. But we really aren't for Walgreens selling tobacco. There are no tobacco products in the store. I know from doing the surveys with the youth, there are tobacco products at New York Deli. So I don't know. I came with, you know, I came with a recommendation, but now I'm kind of torn. But again, you know, Walgreens is a pharmacy that brought out Rite Aid. And it is conflict. So we'll see what happens. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dave, please.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Ms. President.
My name is Dave Belice. I think some of you know me from the coaching work I've done in Central Falls as well as the environment work I've done. I'm also now a progressive Latino. I'm a policy advocate. And I'm here also to talk about the conflict that they would need for Walgreens to sell tobacco products. I already knew that I spoke to you and you're better here today. You're a new woman to a pharmacy. You're there for your health. You see health products. You're thinking about having better choices or getting something to heal an ailment that you have. I think people might get the wrong idea if they go in and see tobacco products there. That's coming from the youth and coming from my parents and other cities that have stopped that. Yes, Vernea has been here, but in Boston are working on similar things. So I would just like to echo what Vernea said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
Jean Morris?
Everybody knows me. Jean, I'm here in the good neighborhood. I want to thank the city hall for letting us and everybody below their prayer and card that while we should have been stuck by the car on Fayette Street. I was watching in the past walk and a lady protecting, I understand. I was trying to go in there, I'm there to say thank you. And I'm also here for logistic care and me and them because I think we should have, I don't know the case. The cars that I went in before my accident, they had a dent that died. I mean, one of them on the side of it, which I'm happy to see. But they don't wear any ID. And I think they should. I mean, we have to go out and check and see if they're there for us. If they're there for us, if they don't have any ID, we don't know. And also they don't stick around too long, so they take off. But anyways, I'm always complaining about that. I want to say thanks again to everyone. Thank you.
Just a note, Jean. I guess the legislature representative Shelby Malgernado is working on that. Next session.
This is the third. Next item is executive communications. The first one is consideration. And I apologize, I left the word consideration from the meeting agenda, which means that the council will be approving this, considering this appointment of Mr. Ryan Strata of 12 Madison Avenue to the Board of Campuses and Registration. Mr. Strata is in class tonight, so he asked to be excused from attending tonight's meeting. But he will be joining the other two members of the Board of Campus to help us with elections this year.
I assume everyone's read his resume?
Can I ask questions, Jean? Is he being? Can I ask a question?
Oh, I know you meant the panel.
No, is he being appointed as a Democrat, as a Republican, or as an independent member for?
Democrat.
Some people going to the other side trying to get in.
And the makeup of that board is or should be?
No more than two of the same party.
Is there any action on the appointment?
Oh, I moved it through.
Have a motion by Councilman Fonseca. Who seconded by Councilman Verona. To approve any further discussion. Hearing and seeing, and all those in favor, the signature by the same eye. Eye, chair, and a tie, made, hearing and seeing. Officer is here for the executive session.
Just the president, please. We moved it tonight. Okay, so now we're going to?
We look for a motion to move to executive session.
Do you have a motion, uh, Councilwoman Solana?
Councilwoman Solana?
Please say it.
To move to executive session. Can we move? Or you move? We'll move. We're going to move, yeah.
Can I move, Mr. President, please?
Those all those in favor, the signature by the same eye. Eye, chair, and a tie.
All right. Yeah. Yeah. Ready? Let's go. You went for you. Okay.
So many.
I'm glad we're able to help.
I definitely saw it before.
He's standing up. Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay, all right. Pretty broad. It'd be easy. No objections. It's time, they come this year, right?
Yes.
I only went like five hours. So it's not far, so. No, it's okay. Oh, man. No, not good. Number one. I'll give you one lunch. One breakfast.
My question is, did you sign? No way. For a taxi, they should pay the man, the steward.
How long does it take to ride home from here? How long does it take to ride home from here? Five church. Take that to the next church. Figure eight. Cost 160 bucks. Go past, go past, go past. Kirkway. Yep. And then I need to stay on 122. At 5.22, stay in that because that takes 30 minutes. 5.22. What did I have to listen to? Once I get there, I hope. Yeah.
She's got to put it down.
So it's like five turns. Most times I can't wait.
Trying to catch the show.
Executive session. For, I guess. Yeah.
Call the cop's car house. Start.
Is there?
Two seats, I think it's, yeah. I didn't go last year.
The first.
I kind of remember.
Are you sure that I don't know? We have a fence in the yard.
Down here, I think it's ours. There's a, there's a. I never go down there, that's why I forgot. I live down there. That's why I forget.
Yeah. I care.
Yeah, every day.
I got a video to group on.
Yeah. It's pretty.
Yeah, well, it's true. Last year. Like, like other transportation. Open and hide it, so you just pay one. Yeah, all right. That makes it easier.
I know, that's why I was bringing it up. Because so many people I know this year, when they have a group fund, I know. I try. And I found a job. And I'm already, I think I got it.
I didn't go over once.
Then I would have done it guilty or something. And then I left, you know? When you were trying to make it, you should have done it. You were wrong. And by change of the law. I wanted to. I'm an executive assistant. You know, I'll do that one right.
Yeah. It's cold in the weeks.
We have to practice.
You don't like it, you have to prepare a working.
That's what I'm hoping. And we go online. I'll get a job over the next year. I probably say the same thing. I'm sorry. It's not for me to. And now she said they have to. Voluntarily. So I never say he was a, he was a great. So, you know, much of it's. Which hair? Yeah. It's not much of us. So now I'm like without that, I'm dying. So I've been.
So I gotta change. Why not now? Yeah.
Well, seriously, when I. Doing sound. Get around, I'll just put music over. Well, that's a great job. I sent you some miles. There you go. So you see, that's literally a glass. You know, I play. Forgot they were.
I'm staying here for easy. I'm gonna make that very clear. That's our, that's it. We know, but we want to hear him speak about the company.
We can still do the best.
Really, I was really impressed by how smart he was.
And it's so. My shit. But you know, you know, it's like. Crystal, she knows her objective.
Well, everyone needs to be. Well, he, you know. He was in last year, he was in last year. And he was.
Your mic hurt now.
It doesn't, but it's. They didn't listen. Yeah.
That's sad. They're not. So that's already tougher, it's like.
Nice. I told him I found him.
Participate, sorry. Why don't you participate?
Right.
I think this is time.
Is this?
I've seen you start out, where you get now. You know, she's saying that. I think I didn't read about that yet. Come to your girl. She shared it on her timeline. You got set up once. First read. It wasn't. But it wasn't. But I never. I'm curious. I don't know. I don't know. I don't. I don't even think it's more. I just think. But I have found. That's all. All right, so. Now. I am. I thought I was supposed to do it in 40 years ago. I think.
Lots of them were just in sales, right? Or at least in some work.
Harry.
Yeah.
The difference is. Also, we have to square.
I'm not.
The worst part about it all. I'm so.
So then we took off some.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah.
Hi.
For them, for us.
They do.
Because these squats today, so. These squats today have.
I want to seal the minutes from executive session.
Motion by Councilman Fonseca. All those in favor, the signature by the same eye. Eye. Yeah, all right. Made, hearing and seeing, eyes have it. Clerk, please call roll or let's look for a motion either to deny the claim or pay the claim.
Motion to approve the claim.
Motion by Councilman Solana. Councilman Falcito to pay the claim. Is that in its entirety? Part of your motion. You total them out?
Yes.
Total them out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tigeroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Z?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solana?
Yes.
Yes, you see. Thank you, Chief. Next item.
We go back to the beginning of the report. It is Department Financial Reports.
Mr. Chairman. We didn't take any action on the appointment.
Yeah, we did. We did. You voted for it. The appointment of the executive. No, he said about the. Board of Campuses.
Yeah, we did. We did.
We voted for it. Yes, sir.
I don't remember the vote. Thank you.
Department Financial Reports.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. In all due respect, I have been asked and I'll continue to ask for a breakdown on the financial reports by the various departments. The first one was the city clerk's office. I'm asking for a breakdown of what has been expended, what has been received. We have for the month of May, what was budgeted. I've asked that we have another column added to that, Mr. Chairman. We don't know if we're on schedule, we're on budget. I please ask that if you provided, Mr. Chairman. I can go through and ask the city clerk one by one, all these. I'm just wasting time, Mr. Chairman. If they provided, then makes the life easier, Mr. Chairman. That's the city clerk's office. The next, Department of Code Enforcement. I made a similar request of that department, Mr. Chairman, that what we have here is only for the month. We do not have a breakdown continuing for the remainder, for the 10 months or so. And what was budgeted, Mr. Chairman. We have broad categories of, they were issued 1,000 complaints. Requests from mechanical and plumbing. These are the same breakdowns that we have every month. Solid waste recycling, accumulation on property, 1,200 and plus letters. Unregistered abandoned vehicles, 100 and plus complaints. Zoning reviews, eight. Municipal code enforcement cases, eight. Continuations, three. If the other courts or the court enforcement director was here.
What are you actually looking for?
I'm looking for a breakdown, Mr. Chairman. That's the same I've been asking for the last year and a half, Mr. Chairman. We have more of a detailed or report on it, Mr. Chairman. Next is the Finance Department, Mr. Chairman. I have similar requests or questions on the total revenue, Mr. Chairman. We have a total revenue of previous years of $300,000 that was budgeted. As of April 30th, we've taken in 600,234, which is in the positive of 300,234. If the finance director could explain. I have other questions, I'll have a line, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, councilmembers. Acting Attorney Inspector Lynn Morganis. Going to your first point, Councilwoman. Could you plug user?
Do you plug usually as a percentage on the right-hand side of percentage remaining? If it doesn't have it and got cut off or written, I will.
No, it's two hundred point zero eight percent. That means we have received.
Correct.
Two hundred percent more than was budgeted.
Great, so we usually budget an estimate of, for this year was three hundred grand in previous revenue, previous years' revenue. And we have had a very good year of receiving previous, older taxes from business residents. We've been part of the state program with the tax offset and stuff like that that we've been making anyway. So that was more than, obviously more than what we expected.
Double, double.
Sure.
Is it also, was the President's Tax Bill, which affected elimination of interest on taxes for the coming year? My understanding is that if taxes were paid prior to the end of last fiscal year, you could deduct them on your taxes, so was that part of the increase in that number also?
We do not inquire why people pay their own taxes, we just take their money.
Or future taxes. A prepaid.
Prepaid?
Prepaid.
Yeah, no, that's not, we don't. That usually only happens like now, like maybe a couple of weeks before the bills do for budgeting purposes. There have been a couple like this past week that prepay, but they go into a prepaid revenue, they don't get counted in the current year. They get deferred, it's called deferred revenue. That's not part of what you're looking at.
And this is as of April thirtieth. Next is the interest on taxes. We've collected, you budgeted two hundred and seventy-five, and as of April thirtieth, we received two hundred and ninety thousand. Do you expect that to go even higher?
Well, sure, every month that people pay, so May and June, if people come in and pay all the taxes, they're also paying their interest, obviously. So I don't, I don't have a, there's no way to calculate if someone's going to come in and pay their two thousand fifteen of taxes today or tomorrow. There's no way to anticipate that, so I can't answer your question.
Could you give me a breakdown on your local pilot revenue? Budgeted sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven. We took in a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five, which was a forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. I think during the budgetary process, last year and every year, we ask, on one of the projections on local pilot revenue, why is this one higher than projected?
I'd have to go back and look at what the state provided us, that's a state number given to us. So I will, I will come back to counsel with that.
All right, next, could you ask?
Counselor question, I have a question.
As long as I'm able to come back, yes.
Hi, Ms. Morganis.
Hi, Councilman.
I just have two quick questions.
Okay.
On the budget report?
Yes.
The only thing that I would want is the percentage missing, the percentage for the end. So under executive, if there's sixty-eight thousand or percentage.
Oh, there's no percentage of the whole group?
The whole group, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's really what I look at.
Easy fix.
Yeah. And then in terms of the capital improvement, it's up to March eighteen. Will we get an updated one?
In the July meeting, you'll get up to May.
May, June?
On the July twenty-third meeting, you might, I don't know, you're definitely going to get May.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so is it?
Yes, Mr. Morganis, motor vehicle pays out. We budgeted ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eight. As of April thirtieth, we received three hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-one, which is a two hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three increase over our budget, which is a three hundred thirty-one point eleven percent increase. I still get calls from people who will tell me that they have not received the, their motor vehicle rebate.
Yeah. So the last batch of rebates are going out this week. There are a handful, I think it's under twenty-five, maybe thirty people, let us hold up. By law, we have until Friday. They're all, they were all in the queue to go out this week, the remaining batch.
Could you explain though why we budgeted ninety-six and we've already brought in three hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-one?
Sure, that's easy. The budget timeline for our budget timeline did not coincide with when the state approved that budget with the state, new state law for cars. So when you approved the eighteen budget in June, the car tax law wasn't enacted. And we had no, there was no visibility in what they were going to do. So that's why that's budgeted like that. Obviously nineteen, your budget, you approve fixing that.
Mr. Morganis on miscellaneous state aid and revenue. Also, you budgeted twenty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars, and we received thirty-six, five hundred, which is almost ten thousand dollars as of April. I think during the budgetary process, I tried to inquire and to determine exactly how much money we were getting in from state and federal revenues. The projections on this budget, which was the eighteen budget, were off. I say we're miscalculated. You're not the finance director at that time, Mr. Morganis, but the excess in this budget, I'm curious, because in the previous year, we had excess totaling close to or more than two million dollars. If you add up the overspent in the budget, that concerns me. And it concerns me that we, the projections that are being provided are not as true to what we have requested. So we are budgeting for much less revenue than we will be getting in, but creating expenses of much more than we need. That's my concern during the whole budgetary process, and unfortunately, I wasn't given the opportunity to ask all these questions. So because this is the budget here, I'm asking these questions so that you could be forewarned in the next six months.
Forewarned?
Forewarned that I'll be asking these questions again. I don't want to surprise you.
I appreciate that, Councilman. But I can tell you, if you're talking about state aid, that's a budget, that's a, those are numbers from the state. They give us, they give it to us twice, once in the beginning of the session and once at the end. And then, well, once when it's approved. So right now, the budget's approved, the budget, the state approved, could have different state aid values. You don't get that until we get a final one this week.
You're actually.
It actually could be different, slightly different. Most years, it changes very little, to be honest with you.
May I ask on behalf of myself and maybe the council that, as soon as available, that you send the council a copy of the new projections of state aid, what you projected, what we budgeted for, and what is actually coming in, so we can compare?
I'm misunderstanding your question, because that's what the budget is. The budget is what the state tells us, and if the state tells us something different, I could send you the updated. I'll send you a link of what the state, the state sends out, municipal report to all towns and cities, to all the executives. I can take that email available to the council.
Hot copy, please.
All right, Mr. Morganis, so is that, Councilman, I think has a question. Are you also just in a dance?
I'll defer to another question, but I have others. I haven't had an opportunity to ask Mr. Morganis questions during the budgetary process, so.
Budget is over.
During the, well.
Budgetary process is over, Mr. Morganis.
He just accessed the budget, he didn't enter the budget. I'm page four of ten of the budget. I see the city contribution to the library. That budget line item was still here. Did we pay the library?
We paid the state. The state forwarded, finally forwarded the piece, it wasn't until the, I want to say it was the first week in June, maybe, that the state sent their, they do it in three pieces, I didn't know that. I thought they did it in two. It's like almost thirty grand, that check was cut and sent to them.
And the hundred and eighteen?
Has been cut and not sent to them.
Not sent to them?
No.
Why?
I have not been given approval to send that out.
It's June twenty-fifth.
Correct.
The fiscal year ends Saturday.
Yes.
We need to send that out, right? We haven't paid the library in a year.
How do you? We can have to take a vote.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thanks for being here. I just have a question about the school housing payment. How did you read as of April? The budget view was about one point three or one point four, you know? Have you received that already?
Yeah, so that's the last bond payment of the year, so that one, I think, is like ninety-seven percent, yeah, so we paid it, and then we get reimbursed, we paid it in June, and that'll show up in the next report that got me a list of us.
Mr. Morganis on the Public Works Department, capital expenditures. For that, for this budget, no money was budgeted for capital expenditures. But as of April thirtieth, we spent eighty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. I know Elaine's not here, so I can't ask her, so my understanding is that there were no capital, there's no funds to put in a budget and none provided. I don't understand what that's for, you can explain that later.
Well, I could tell you what it's for.
Okay. Now or later?
No, I didn't. I can't anticipate every one of your questions.
No. Next.
Someone I actually could.
Compensated absence, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars, we haven't spent any of it. Is that going to be surplus, excess revenue in this budget?
I'd have to go back and work with HR to see if anyone's left that hasn't been paid their vacation buyouts. So basically, what that is, is when someone leaves and they have unused vacation, you know, we don't pay sick time anymore. Vacation, by law, we have to.
Why not sick time?
That ended during the bank proceeding, we never paid sick time since. We do not pay it when someone leaves.
Okay, could you also ask?
But I don't believe, I don't believe we've had, the people that have left have not had long outstanding, you know, vacation payouts.
Okay, we could check that.
Sure.
Next, Mr. Morganis, HRA. We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars into the account. We've spent as of April thirtieth, two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one, which leaves a balance of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety thousand, Mr. Morganis. At this, well, when I go through the budget, Mr. Morganis, I find a trend of accounts that have been overbudgeted with coming to the end of the year, I don't know if these funds are going to be expended. So I'm asking to check that and get back to us. The same is with OPEB.
OPEB, I wish my dad would have heard of this.
We have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, and now one dollar of that OPEB has been spent. Now, just those two line items.
Councilman, I see a lot of that. So the OPEB has been paid in June, so that's a trust fund that three years ago started, whenever you approved budget from the council, is a line item for a hundred grand. What that does is lower our unfunded liability for retirees, other payments, other medical payments that are not covered in there. Normal retirement medical package is all of that is, it was a twelve million dollar unfunded liability, it's down to three million because of the fund that we started a few years ago. So every year, we pay three hundred in, it's in the budget that you approve every year, it's in nineteen.
And now we spent last year, Jim, only, only that amount?
Yes, sir.
The pension itself. The medical retirees' medical, as the next line item, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's been budgeted. We've only spent fifteen hundred. So we have a hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. So out of those two accounts, Mr. Morganis, two and a half, a quarter of a million dollars on just those two accounts. Is any of that medical insurance retirees' way to be paid, the one hundred fifty thousand?
As was explained during the budget process, the whole time you've been on council, the HRA and retired medical are claims reporting that we get from the trust, and we get them quarterly. So what we do at the end of the year is we sit with them, we get the report, reconcile it, and as the retirees use their benefits, that's when we get, we get billed from the trust and put it in there. So we haven't, that's all about usage of the retirees, we're not in control of how they use their HRA, whether they get reimbursed or copays.
Oh, we're budgeting for that hundred fifty thousand dollars and.
Well, yeah, because there's a hundred retirees that have access to the HRA.
Could you look at the last few years of what's been budgeted and what's been spent? Maybe we could come back with a sure figure for the budget in the future.
I know five years ago was four hundred grand, so every year, as we reconcile it, when we see a trend of usage, we adjust the coming year's budget based on what the trust is telling us. That's why this year was, both of those line items were reduced in the nineteen budget.
Now, the central force pension plan, in the pension plan, ARC, the first one was budgeted two hundred, two million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, we spent a million nine. In the ARC, budgeted a hundred eighty-four, and nothing has been spent out of that, those funds.
As of April.
As of April thirtieth.
Yes, the ARC payment, so what that is, is, well, first, a big number, those are the payroll amounts monitoring to the pension use. So those, that will get.
Are those the payers of the go, or are these?
Yes. So that would get, that will get used up by the end of the year. The two ninety-twos are the extra we put in, and they get put in at the end of the year, like OPEB in June. So those monies have been sent to June.
I'm concerned that the liability to the pension is, Mr. Morganis, could you provide a breakdown of what we've provided them?
That's not in the, that's not in the budget right now.
That's a comparison for the future.
Anyone else? Any other departments having questions? The bureau's here, the fighting office chief is here by Friday. I know Elaine, I spoke to her issues, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, so we see, thank you. Next item.
Next item, our two executive orders, vacation from the executive, possibly to be received by the council. The first one is two thousand eighteen zero zero two, executive financial director is two thousand eighteen zero zero three. Swearing in a basic family.
So we see.
Mr. Chairman, next item. Mr. Chairman.
Here are the questions.
I have a question, reading the executive order, and judging from the next meeting we set up, which is for the end of July, I will not be here, the finance, the active finance director's term will expire before that meeting. So I just wanted to ask the solicitor what the protocol or expectation would then look like.
I have not spoken to the executive, to the mayor, or the administration, and I don't know what their plans are, but I can do that and we'll go back to you.
Yeah, because I was going to ask, could you, the way that section one is written under the executive order, it can't last longer than ninety days, does that mean legally he cannot submit another executive order extending that time? Or could he reset the clock on that? I'm just wondering, because there's, that's going to be a period of a week and a half, we can have no finance director before we vote it on.
I can look at that and go back to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I do have a point of order, though. Mr. Chairman.
Regarding the executive order?
Regarding, well, there's a couple. One of them is regarding executive orders. The executive orders were not provided to us until Sunday night. I believe I got mine at late afternoon, which was less than twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours prior to the open meeting law. So it was not included in the original agenda. That's another issue I'll. That's another issue I'll discuss later, Mr. Chairman. But these executive orders were not provided pursuant to our rules and regulations. One. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, the executive order regarding Mr. McGinnis, I do have a similar concern. We are already over two months into a ninety-day appointment. I realize that the mayor, people served at the mayor until they are replaced or discharged, so... Failure to appoint, I don't think creates a problem with his service. He's been serving without the executive order sent to us until now. So I don't see a problem with it. I just see a problem with the deadline and the timetable that it's done. My second concern, Mr. Chairman, is the executive order number three regarding the swearing-in of a patrol officer. I turn to the solicitor for an opinion on pursuant to article four of the Home Rule Charter. My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that when the mayor is not available and the council president serves in the absence of the mayor, I am concerned that that the mayor gave the authority, the executive authority, not to the chief, but to someone other than the council president, when the council president holds that responsibility by charter. I turn to the solicitor for an opinion on my point of order.
Councilman, I reviewed the matter and approved the executive order as written pursuant to the sections regarding executive order.
Which is... In what vein did you approve it? I don't understand.
That the mayor can assign his powers of swearing-in to a designate. And that is what he did in that executive order.
So when the mayor is not present or available, he can assign his authority to anybody in the future? And that the council president's duties and responsibility as the second in charge of the city in the absence of the mayor is no longer valid?
I don't think the mayor's executive powers are automatically transferred to the legislative branch. I've never read that in the city charter. If you could point...
Not the legislative branch, to the council president.
He's the legislative, he's the leader of the legislative branch.
He is the second in, if the... Pursuant to charter, I think our charter and other charters, if the mayor is incapacitated or no longer able to serve, then the next official would be the council president. Same thing is the place in the city of Warwick recently, and the mayor stepping down in Warwick to take a new position. The council president automatically would assume the authorities and duties of the mayor. I don't understand how the mayor could switch.
So after Warwick was the mayor resigned, and the city council president became the executive branch. What you're asking for is that the legislative branch take on the duties of the executive branch co-terminus at the same time. That is against the concept of separation of powers. It is not in our charter. Our charter gives the executive authority to the mayor, the mayor designated that properly pursuant to the powers, and that executive order is done correctly pursuant to the charter.
I...
That's the answer to your point of order.
I question that if the mayor, if I can give you a, ask you for an explanation. If the mayor is, gets into an automobile accident, God forbid, I don't wish that, but is incapacitated in a coma and is no longer able to perform his duties, who would be responsible to take over the duties of the city while the mayor is unconscious?
For acting finance?
The swearing-in. I have no problem with the Colonel swearing in the office.
I don't say the problem with the Colonel. I have a problem with the process, Mr. Chairman. I object to the order to that process, and I registered those objections. First of all, that it was not on the agenda. It wasn't received forty-eight hours prior. The executive order of finance director, could be more clarified, but the one of the swearing-in of a patrol officer transferring his authority and duties as mayor, I question the point of order to that, Mr. Chairman. And I ask for a written ruling on that. If this is something that's going to happen in the future, I think we need to understand the chain of command in our city, which I've always thought if the mayor is incapacitated, not able to serve, then automatically the council president would step in under the interpretation of the solicitor. That's not so. And I'd like a determination on that.
Point of order called a question. The solicitor has ruled and pointed to the point in the charter in which it states that the executive can appoint a designate. So President, can you keep it moving, babe? Thank you.
I ask for a point of order in writing, Mr. Chairman, for the determination.
I'm sure Matt can provide it. So we check the executive order.
I object to the swearing-in of Kevin.
Schedule of course, here in consideration. According to many chapter fourteen, court please. Courts, chapter fourteen, article two. Check this.
Motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter fourteen on court.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll call vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozé?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for adjutant's presence.
Thank you.
Next item is ordinance amending chapter eight, animals. Article five, dogs, division, general league, second reading. And for public hearing.
Public hearing now.
We have one person signed up, I'm sorry.
Lorraine?
No, I have no clue.
It's me.
Okay, oh, no, I'm sorry.
I don't own a dog.
She raised her hand for you.
I don't own a dog. The only thing I have here is in two areas where it says, except seeing eye dog. I think it should be service dog. Because my cousin has a service dog. She's not blind, but she needs a dog to assist her. And he's allowed anywhere she goes. So I think those two areas should be changed to service dog rather than seeing eye dog. Those would be the options.
Motion to amend section eight, one, three, six, subsection A and B, changing seeing eye dogs to qualified service dogs, or... What's, what would be the right language? Certified service dog? Usually you would have something that shows that service dog is appropriate.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Acosta to amend, to strike the word seeing eye dog and replace it with certified service dog.
Second.
Second by Councilman Solano and Councilman Lozé. Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment?
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozé?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for adjutant's presence.
Looking for a motion to pass as amended.
Motion to pass amended.
Excuse me, I didn't write my name down, but I just have one comment about the fine. Was there a decimal point there? Is that really a three-dollar fine that you could cover? That's his ordinance. Three dollars? I'll look at the... I quickly read through it.
So just to make a point, it's a three-dollar late fee for registering a dog. It's not the fine for having a dog.
But a three dollar?
It's only, it's eleven dollars.
I mean, you don't want to make it cost prohibitive to have a dog.
Yeah, all right. Three dollars, it's almost not...
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Second. Any further discussion?
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozé?
Yes.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion for adjutant's presence.
Thank you.
Next one is ordinance creating the Central Falls Participatory Budgeting Committee. It is frustrating. We have a public hearing as well.
Any sign?
We do have.
Public hearing now.
Lorraine, it's hard.
I'm going to wait and pick up the...
She wants to talk at the end.
I'm sorry.
So you gotta listen to me.
I don't want to take anybody's thunder.
This is the first time I've seen this ordinance, and I apologize. I have not been to some meetings because I've been out of the country. And I feel badly I didn't attend the budget hearings because I would certainly have a lot to say, and I'm sure you know it. See, a budget hearings must went, zoom! I've read, I've just read this this evening. And when I look at this and see who's listed to be on this budget committee, it looks like everyone has a vested interest in something. We got the panthers who've got a vested. We got the school departments got a vested interest. And you go down the whole thing. Where is the plain old taxpayer, like me? Where do I get a say? I don't get a say when it comes to council meetings because no one listens. But where do you get a say? And my other question is, is there should be some kind of qualification if you put people on a board. They should have planning background, they should have some real estate background, or pick people who have those kinds of things that you're looking for in the community. You know, maybe a social networking background, but some finance background. You know, you get a group of people here, it could be anybody. And the other thing I ask, no one does it say they have to be a taxpayer or a resident of the city. And I object to that. I think if we're going to have a panel or a board, we need to have people that are residents of the city who are getting involved. You look around, today's a good group you've got here. I count, you've got no one that speaks up. You know, so you're going to get people who've never come to a meeting. I'm going to be saying, what's good for me, what's good for you, what's good for you. So I would like this to, if you could possibly reconsider what's written on this piece of paper as who's going to make up a committee. I know I'll never be picked, so I know that. But I think you need to have some people who have some responsibility, who have some background, who understand. I came to the audit hearing. I think most of the committee didn't even understand the audit. I mean, I think you did. I think you understood it, I think a few others. But I mean, no one really picked up on some of the things that were in that audit that were important to ask. And I think you need someone. Maybe you need an auditor who, you know, works on it. I don't know, but you need someone, people who understand, who can give you guidance. You don't have to know everything, but you have to have some guidance, and you have to have people who can help you with that. That's my recommendation as a taxpayer.
Thank you. You made some good points, I think. You really did.
President.
Is this, for your order?
Good evening again. I like the idea of this, but again, I'm not represented here. You have Progreso Latino. There's not a lot of people have Progreso Latino in Central Falls. You have people from the library, you have people from the mayor's health office. I mean, we, if you're going to do this, do a criteria. I would love for the council to, you know, do the first interviews to see, you know, then send it over to the mayor for his approval. But maybe this about us, there's too many outsiders that come into this community that make decisions for us, and it's not fair. We have no votes. And, you know, we need someone to sit there that lives here, that walks the streets day to day, their kids are in the school district. Not people that are outside. We, we don't have affordable housing. I'm so afraid when this new clinic comes into place, when this representation happens, we're going to be pushed out because we're not homeowners. And I've seen this happen in Massachusetts. And I know it's happened in New York. It's going to be happening in Connecticut. We put you here, please. You know, if there's any way, I think this is excellent. This is great. But let us be part of it. Because if not, there's going to be people that are going to be promoting their own vested interests. And it's not going to help me or my grandchildren or my neighbors or my friends. So, thank you.
Lorraine. Go back to the phone.
Say the best of last.
Go back to the phone.
That's what I was going to say. So I...
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm blocking my voice, so... I already spoke to Councilman Acosta a couple of weeks ago, and this just doesn't make sense to have somebody from the past organization on this committee. Someone on the chart, in a charred school on this committee, someone in the school department on this committee. School department is taken over by the state, not, not, it's not a city, it's not a city thing. I think, say, four people. Taxpayers, taxpayers in the city, property owners in the city on this. Some more small business on this. Housing authority, but I bring, you know, as everyone said, this needs work, a lot of work. Thank you. Thank you. To have the taxpayer some relief. Thanks.
Looking for a motion to move forward so we can get to discussion stage.
I want to support.
Second. Second by Councilman Acosta, and then Councilman Solano. To move forward for his passage under discussion.
Yeah, I'd love to go first and answer some other concerns. The first is being completely and blatantly honest. That the people here represent very specific interests, and that's intentional. If you work with the CF Panthers, you work with the youth. If you work for the housing, you work for some of our most vulnerable population. If you work for Fuerza Laboral, you work literally for workers. Now, you may not feel that way. But the reality is, you have the luxury of being here. Many of the people that these groups provide services for and work with do not have the luxury of being here on a Monday night at six o'clock. They're still working, or they're picking up their kids, or their kids don't have a voice yet. If there is someone else you would like to bring to the table, I think that is a valid assertion. But to sit here and say that you don't agree with these people being at the table, I think you are wrong. I think you are being presumptuous. I think you have had the benefit of exercising a voice. And I think, if anything, we need more voice. What should be clear about this is these folks do not get a vote on the budget. The way that you express your interests, your needs, your demands, is by voting. If you don't agree with your council member, either vote them out or run against them. That's a simple way of having your voice heard. But these are the people that work with our kids, that work with our seniors, that work with our business owners on a day-to-day basis, and that can bring to the table their interests and their needs when they're not able to do so and speak up themselves. When you look around this room, it's always the same people. It is always the same people.
Because we're interested.
Because you're interested, and because you have the ability to be here. Not everybody can be here. We saw that at the budget meeting. We see that on and on when you come and speak. And so this brings more voices to the table. That's the intention of the ordinance. It does not take power away from the everyday citizen. It also demands something that a lot of folks here have been asking for, for the creation of a five-year plan that gives everybody in the city a vision for where we're going to be. There is no current ordinance that demands a five-year plan in this city. This one does. And it makes sure that the same people who provide all these services know where the city is headed and know where the resources in the city are being spent. So that if I work at Progreso Latino, Fuerza Laboral, or for the CF Panthers, I can tell the service people that I'm providing, hey, this is what's available for you. This is what the city's doing for you, and this is what the city's doing next year. And this is what the city's doing next year, two years, three years, and five years from now. So I am 100% open to adding more people to the table. I am completely against removing them because they represent voices that aren't often heard.
Lorraine?
First, I just want to say I think this is a great idea, just like a lot of the residents mentioned. However, I see how those specific appointees from those organizations... I work for a school district. I know exactly who Victor Capian is going to choose to be on it. I know exactly who Mario Bueno is going to choose to be on it. And they're not from Central Falls. They're not vested in Central Falls. My mother has lived here for over 30 years. Four of her kids graduate number one and two from Central Falls High School. She is not representative anywhere in this. The Cape Verdean community is not represented at all. And the Portuguese community is not represented at all. The Polish, the Syrian, there's no, there's none of that representation here. So for me, so for me, when I see specific Northern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, they're going to choose. He has a very close relationship with the mayor. He's going to say, mayor, who should we choose? And that's who's going to be appointed. It's just, that's how politics works. That's how it's going to be. So, so when we say they don't have an interest in this, yes, they absolutely do. Because guess who gets into partnerships with the city? Progreso Latino. You don't think our money funnels into Progreso Latino, into the school district, into the charter schools? It's all interconnected. So if we don't want there to be conflict of interest, I think the proper way to do it, Providence for all their boards, they have applications. It's only for residents. You put the application out and it's our job as council people, as the city, to go out and find those people. There are people. There's tax people in the city. There's everything in the city. That's financial planners. We have to go find them. Yes, it might take extra work, but guess what? You bring those people to the table and they're vested now. That's how we build engagement to the community. So if you guys have any suggestions on who we can bring to the table, we'll go knock on their doors and go pull them out. But I think the way that it's written is very biased. And that's just my opinion because I know how this stuff works. And I know exactly, I can tell you five people are going to be chosen to be and sit on that board.
You go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great. But I suggest to add a few taxpayers to this. I agree with what we have, you know, but I think as more people we get, you know, I think it's better. I would suggest to add a few taxpayers to this community.
Yeah, same thing I'm going to say.
It's a great, it's a great ordinance. And we just can do an amendment, including members of the community. And between those members of the community could be very well an appoggiù.
Don't even think about it because the mayor will never pick me to be on it. Because I'm too outstuck.
It's a new application.
Because I'm too outstuck.
One-page, one-page application. What are your skills helping you to make it happen?
Thank you. So my point here is, if you're afraid it's going to be political, taking an application makes it more political. It now makes it. So like very other appointments work out, you have to go out and find people. Let's find out how long it took to find someone to serve on the board of campuses that was in the city, right? So again, if you want to have qualifications for who you bring in, let's talk about what those are. But if you're going to have a meeting where you vote, to her point, this is going to work against you. Before Fuerza Laboral, Progreso Latino, the Central Falls School District, the RI League of Charter Schools have all been here before we were in office and will be here after. That makes them less susceptible to being politically maneuvered than somebody who you simply take an application for and approve. They will have to listen. Once it becomes an ordinance, the mayor will have to talk to the representative from Progreso. The mayor will have to talk to the representative from the CF School District, regardless of whether they are friends or not, regardless of whether they have a relationship or not. That is a much stronger failsafe than letting somebody walk up to their friend and say, hey, we'd really like you to apply. And then the council that's on our side will vote to approve.
And I just want to add, just like fire and police, you guys have criteria, right? Somebody just can't come into, oh, I want to be a fire, a fireman, a firewoman, right? There's a point, a point system. So just like there's point systems for those applications, why can't we do a point system for this? If you live in the city, guess what? You get extra points. If you're a veteran, if you're a senior, guess what? You get extra points. And that's how you do it. So it's fair. Everything's black and white. There's no gray area. There's no room to interpret everything. It's just right there. So it's a one-page application. You list out how you can contribute to this committee and there's a voting system. So what's the experience out of five? You're rated. And then you create a committee.
Anyone else? My concern is the self-interest, but I don't want to take on, for example, Panthers. But naturally, a meeting of 10 organizations, every organization, you know, I need this. I need this. I need this. Next thing you do, you go very inflated, which would be even worse. Now, talk about elected officials. That's why we're elected, to speak for the people. We don't, you know, the more people involved sometime, it doesn't work. I've been on committees where there's 10, there's 12, there's 15 people. There's 15 ideas, you know what? You get nothing done. And that's my concern. And, and, and there is right. Maybe we're going to need more, quote, resident taxpayers for one. And my concern is the theory is, naturally, you can't blame them. Every organization's going to be for themselves. I think the theory is great. Don't get me wrong. It's a start. I really think it's a start. And we got time. This is only first passage tonight. We can move it along. We can work on it. And I'm sure there'll be tons of amendments between now and January 21. That's how I feel. I think we, I think it needs work. I think the theory is there, perhaps on the right track. There's some pitfalls here. Anyone else? No?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I like to echo, I like to echo some of the comments that were made by some of the public. And I agree with the comments from the council, Councilwoman Fonseca. I agree. My concern is that there should be an advisory board, but it's a check and balance to us and to the mayor. I do not believe the mayor should be appointing anyone to this. They should, so requests should be made to the council and the council should then appoint. We should be looking for a broader category of people. The city has become 70% minority in the city. We can't neglect that fact. But there are many people in the city, old established business people and residents who are going unheard. This is something that we need to bring them more involved. I also agree, and I knocked down prior to the public speaking, that no member should be appointed on this unless they are a city resident. We should not be providing any, to anyone who is not a city resident. They should all be part of the problem to fix the solution. No one should be brought from the outside. They should not be appointed by the mayor. This is a check and balance of his budget, of giving him suggestions. Unfortunately, because of this council's makeup over the past few years, there's been no check of balance, in my opinion, regarding this budget. We have not had a finance committee meeting, which this would do the help.
Can you stop this, man? I can't hear.
I had the right to speak like you do.
My man, I was talking about her.
You do.
I heard that she was interrupting you.
Oh, I'm not looking.
I'm trying to listen.
Okay, but your tone is a lot right now, too. Since you started with the residents. Still at the point of...
No, it's been since you've been interrupting the whole year.
No, no, I said you were with the residents. You were very rude with the residents, is what I'm saying. You were very rude.
I, I wasn't looking. Excuse me. I was looking at the public, but I wasn't even looking at the chairman. We are check and balanced. This is part of the ordinance.
Well, you're talking about a finance committee, et cetera. This is what he's working on.
This is in place of a finance, but we don't have one.
Well, that's fine.
No, we should have it. We should have a finance committee of the council.
I think his theory is correct.
I think it's an assist to the council. I agree. I think with some tweaking, this would be acceptable.
Well, stick to it.
Mr. Chairman, you keep interrupting me.
Because I'm trying to set you straight, Tom.
No, you're not saying you're straight. You're not allowing me to express my comments.
A committee that's going to act similar to a finance committee.
You're not allowing me to express my comment in the way I want, Mr. Chairman. You allow that to every council person here. This is something that's going to be an assist to the council.
Stick to the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I support this theory. I would be very happy to work with the author to try to make this even better because this is for a check and balance. We want to strengthen our budgetary process. And Councilman Acosta, I have to correct one thing that you said earlier is that we do not have a five-year plan. In our charter, we have a five-year plan. We don't adhere to it. It's a five-year budget, five-year capital improvement. I objected to it earlier by submitting an ordinance to amend the capital program and capital budget, which had nothing in this past introduction. They then amended it to two years. That's still a violation because we call for a five-year. Even if it's 0-0-0, we need to have a five-year projection. We have not been provided that. That's a violation of our charter. These are some of the things that we need to discuss through the hearings, which we've not been allowed to. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion, first passage. Put it, please, follow vote.
Councilman Perry?
I'm going to vote yes with the intention that it needs work and we have time.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
No.
Councilman Oze?
Yes, with stipulation, there has to be amendments to prior to the passage.
Councilman Swan?
Yes. Mr. President? Yes. I think there's a couple of people here come here for license, application, and that.
Yeah, we all know that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only applicant here is Latino that I'm showing the wall with.
Hi, thank you for your patience.
So your advocate has two applications from this organization. One has two dates of rodeos, one in July, one in September. And then there's a festival in August and December application.
Same organization. We've had the rodeo for years. Both Chief Randy and, you know, we've never had a problem. I know you signed off. We all said we have enough. All this is on duty.
Well, the major concern I have, and we did have a problem last year, is that there was no tranquilizer, there was no veterinarian, I'm sorry. The tranquilizer, it was, it was an issue with that. And right now, I guess the veterinarian that's been picked for this is away on vacation and the property documentation has not been submitted. So the only thing I would ask is, this is approved. It's going to be a contingent on the fact that we had that documentation sent to the city clerk's office. And if it's not, then we hold the permit for it.
Yeah, I know we've been, all said, while I was away, the deputy chief sat down and went over everything. He proved that he said he was comfortable with it. So if he's comfortable with it, then I am also.
Can I ask the citizens, you know, something?
Sure.
Don't be upset.
Uh, sure.
I just know in the past, there's been a lot of issues with the grass and like the field itself. So for me, I know we talked a lot about this last year. It's how are we going to ensure that the field isn't messed up? Because right now, we're very sure our fields to use.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, a valid concern. Traditionally, we use the backfield over at Hagenson for the rodeo. And the poles have been put in a very specific location of that backfield. The rodeo organization, by signing the park permit that they've signed, are liable for any damages that were to happen. So they are responsible for, if any of the grass gets destroyed, they're responsible for putting roofs up. A sprinkler head gets broken for whatever reason, they're responsible for replacing it. Something that I've also noticed, rather than having this event at Hagenson this year, we anticipate doing some work at Hagenson and actually also at Maycomber. But this event, considering Maycomber will most likely be offline for more time until we get the testing sort of situated and underway, which is still available to be used, but most people have opted to not use it. This event will be at Maycomber.
This will?
Yes, it will be at Maycomber. The rodeo has been traditional, but prior to me being in Park and Brack, the rodeo was held at Maycomber. And so it's going back to the original location. Maycomber isn't being used by our, majority of our sports teams. And so it's back to the original setup that I believe was used prior to Hagenson being used. And they are liable for any damages that are caused.
So are we getting Maycomber vetoed?
Yes, and so, but we feel that it will take probably a while. They also know, and I've made it very clear, both Rob and myself, we sit down, have a meeting with the police, fire, clerk's office, Park and Brack, that if we have our, depending on how the results come back from the testing that we're doing over at Maycomber, we may need to reschedule or move the event. And in that case, if something does, if something does happen, we'll probably come back to the council and discuss using, utilizing at different locations.
Do we, we feel the test results will be right to their event?
Uh, I, I, I would say yes, but Tom can speak more. Tom Delly can speak better on that.
Yeah.
Are all three of the events at Maycomber?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
So there's going to be two rodeos?
Yes.
There's always been two? No one?
No.
Last year, they did two.
And you answered the question on the column about the...
Tranquilizing.
Well, there's actually two stipulations that I actually want to point out to the council that I had discussed with the police department. And I just want to make, you know, we meet ahead of time and there's a lot of paperwork and conversations that have been leading up to this. There's two things that we want to put out there. One is that the signed document needs to be sent over to clerk and to the police department from a certified veterinarian, that they'll be onsite with the tranquilizers gone. She's well aware of that. She's provided us the name and we're waiting for confirmation within the next three days from the veterinarian, that they'll be there onsite with the tranquilizers gone. That's stipulation number one. Stipulation number two is that we ask the council, we as, as an administration, and as the police department, ask that the council approve the two rodeos under the stipulation that nothing goes wrong with the first rodeo. So if the police department will reach out to you if they have concerns and anything goes wrong, if there's, you know, chaos or something, the police department will reach out to you. And the organizer will know that these are conditional. The first and second one, that as long as everything goes smoothly, which in the past they have. So, you know, considering that the, the, the council meeting date was moved, we originally had told her that she has to, until July, to get all of her documentation ready. We switched it, therefore she had to do that a little bit earlier. And there was just some...
What is the advantage of the stadium rather than the, the word we just passed? I think it's like...
Yeah, well, I can speak on that. Some advantage of the stadiums are, one, that the entrances are, it's fully enclosed. And I know Hagenson is a little bit too, but this one's a little bit easier to monitor entrance and out. I'd say another advantage to having it at Maycomber is, um... We're redoing it.
I'm sorry?
That we're redoing it? Well, that, that was...
It's like tradition.
It was access and... Sorry, I don't remember.
Where will the, where will the... Where's my standing? Where will the...
No, traffic, you know, we have, we deal with traffic with the Panthers and those sort of issues where it's on street parking.
My, my concern is the traffic because we're out there, High Street. Correct me if I'm wrong, Colonel, that's where they had the problem years ago. They had a voting scam. That was at Maycomber.
A voting scam?
Yeah, yeah, correct. That was probably about 10 years ago. The voting scam. And we didn't have the problem.
The vote was a scam, that we didn't have the proper procedures in place. We didn't have the double fence, we didn't have a tranquilizer, we didn't have the veterinarian with the tranquilizer. And so all those things was, we learned a lot from that one incident.
He went over to what?
No, he never got on Maycomber Stadium, he only got out of the pen. I can tell you, that's probably the only time in my life I could actually say I was really afraid. Five thousand pound bull looking straight at my...
But that was an example of one of the reasons why our Police Department now is the man that has the okay drone here on the pen.
Councilor President, so I guess for me, my concern is like with the field, right, for Maycomber. It's not safe for our kids to play there, but we're having all these events and inviting the community there. And, and roughing up the field. So it's like, what's our priority? Are we fixing the field? Are we making it, are we roughing it more off? What's the plan for Maycomber? Because we just approved, and that's why last, a couple of months ago, remember we approved the play on five different parks? Nothing, what's happening with all the proof?
So there's a lot happening with our parks. Uh, Tom Delly was scheduled to present at the next council meeting since there was a switch and this council meeting was earlier. He had some food payment and vacation. We can't necessarily speak tonight, but there's a lot of work going on with both Hagenson, Maycomber, River Island Campground, which we also need to be here for. There's a lot that goes into testing a field, a lot more than I think most of the general public, you know...
Can I listen to them? Would you like to go to Duncan Dole's?
So just, there's a lot that goes into testing. There's phase one, which is a lot of background work and the historical use of the site. Phase two is the actual digging of the holes and sending it over to testing. And unfortunately, that process takes months. So I would also say that it has not been determined that it is unsafe for the public to use Maycomber. There were portions of the area that were tested. And we were, as we discussed with the council, we were mandated to explain what was found around the perimeter. We, the field has actually never been tested, and that's what we're moving forward to actually do. So I just don't want to say that the field is unsafe, because that's not fully accurate. So I just want to throw that out there. The rodeo is well aware that we have received, fortunate to receive the DEM funding to move forward with that testing, because the testing is really expensive and it might, the testing and the remediation may take the full $300,000, which we hope it doesn't. But they know that if their rodeo were to interfere in any way, shape, or form with the proposed renovations at Maycomber, they either have to not have it or find a second site. So that was made abundantly clear from the start, that we have both, that we have work going on at both Hagenson and Maycomber. And there is a possibility that although the council is approving it, if in September, we have, you know, we're ready to do the remedial work, then our children come first. So that was made clear.
I have a question on the app.
Oh, frankly, I just was talking for the application here, they might buy it and then you couldn't find it.
I can't buy it.
It was the second packet that I dropped off at your house on Friday.
So the two dates are what now?
July.
It was sent by email, Councilman, on Thursday, and then I dropped it off.
Okay, okay. My thought is this, if everything goes well in July, I don't think both dates should be approved tonight. We should see how July goes before we approve September. That's my feeling.
Is that the council's discretion there?
Not forbid something happens in July, whether it be tubos getting away or...
My only response to that would be, they have another application for something on August 18th. We should be cutting it close for our approval. That is not a rodeo, it's just a...
Right, yeah, yeah, that's okay.
So we could approve the 20, July 19th, August 18th, and then vote on the September rodeo at the August meeting.
Yeah, I'd rather see how the rodeo works.
And that's completely okay?
Yeah, I'm so concerned with Maycomber, to be honest. More residential.
Oh, there is no August, there is no...
July, July 23rd.
Yeah, it would have to be, no, it's a rodeo of July 29th. So that's...
Yeah, but they have to approval for July. This would be for the September. They say the September one, you want to get approval until September 21st or something?
Right, so that's, but that's the issue. So, you know, just explaining on behalf of the organizer, any of you who have organized an event with NIC, I know many of you have, understand that there's a lot of work that goes into organizing it, especially with the rodeo, they get...
We can do, I think we did this two years ago, we had a problem with the field, the first one, and I think we canceled the second one, if I'm not mistaken.
No, not with disorganization.
We didn't ask you to cancel the second one, because the field was all torn up the first one. I don't know if we're jarring this. Hagenson was torn up the first event, they had a second one.
That was like two, two years ago.
Yeah, I believe we, I believe we asked to cancel it.
So that's why we put both of them on the...
All right, I mean, okay, we can do it another way. I mean, we can, we can approve both if something happens in July. We're just going to tell you September's off.
I move to approve the rodeo festival event. If something happens, we can just cancel.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, that's fine.
Hi, how are you? Can you just tell us your name and...
Yes, my name is Egeroldez.
And how, I know the organization is in Waltham, Waltham, Mass. How did you guys end up in Central Falls and how does this rodeo help the residents?
So, just to translate...
And she also lives in Central Falls, just on...
Yeah, he, he lives in Central Falls.
So one, she lives in CF, is the obvious answer. Two, she used to own a cowboy, or, you know, store on Broad Street. She currently, the reason why the address is listed as Waltham is because that's where she currently owns a cowboy store.
Can I leave that center?
Anyone else?
Chairman, I just...
Yeah?
On the application.
We all send the application.
I only have, I only have a date of August 18th.
That one, it's two separate, sorry, it's two separate applications.
Oh, these are two separate?
That's the, that's the ball, that's the rodeo dates.
No, no, that's, I'll leave it together with this.
Yeah, those two are together.
That's why I'm going to approve.
Motion, we have a motion by Councilor Figueroa, I agree to approve. Second advice, Councilor Solano, any further discussion? Will call vote.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Acosta?
Yes.
Councilor Figueroa?
Yes.
Council, Councilor Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilor Jose?
Yes, my only concern is that the solicitor provides legal sign-off on the use of the field, because it has been determined, it has, it's stated. I just don't want any liability to fall back, somebody getting injured and having liability that they have lead poisoning or arsenic poisoning or something else on the field.
Councilor Solano?
Yes, they should. I mean, if they have this event, they should have it included. So the liability is for the organization to have it.
Motion, Perry?
The only stipulation, as the journal says, is a tranquilizer instrument and a veteran, veteran. So you would... And hopefully, the event goes well, the first rodeo, so we can have a second rodeo.
I'm here, so...
Oh, he's been there all night.
I've been here all night.
We need people. Come back again.
Oh, my God.
Well, thanks, that's... Well, thanks for my license.
Hi.
Hey, I saw you there.
I saw you there all night.
What's that?
So I saw you last week.
I didn't say I see you all night.
This is a tobacco license for Mr. Company, Rite Aid, one, like a store, one or two, three, zero.
Have you even, have you done the transition yet?
Um, we are just currently owned by Walgreens, doing business still as Rite Aid. We have not gone through a transition. We don't see a transition happening this fiscal year. So we're still currently operating as Rite Aid. It's just, there was just a transfer of ownership in January of corporate ownership.
So they're looking for a license under Walgreens, but not Rite Aid?
Well, we're looking for a license under Walgreens doing business as Rite Aid.
And it's a renewal, because you guys already have.
It's a renewal, we have, we've had a license for years. We've never had a license revoked for any other reason other than it was the transfer of corporate.
So it's not new?
It is a renewal.
You can't transfer.
It's a back interest, so it's new.
But you guys sell tobacco, correct?
No, we do not. We removed tobacco January 15th, when the transfer of ownership.
So you're looking to get tobacco back?
We are looking to get tobacco back, yes.
So it is a renewal.
Do we have one available, correct, Madam President? Does the other gentleman?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Got your questions.
How many licenses does the city currently have available?
One.
One, that's a question, I guess.
But there's two applicants today.
That is correct. That is correct, that's our determination here.
Is the other applicant here?
No. So just as a point of clarification, how would you, if there's one license, what is the procedure to grant?
The procedure would, would be to compare the history of the licenses. We had the other gentleman here last meeting, which was a violation. And he basically admitted so. I guess we can compare track record, so I think that's what I'm looking at.
Confirmed, Solicitor?
Yes. Just to clarify, right? Okay, New York, they already have, right, a license?
No.
Is that the one that we find?
Exactly.
So to add more context, for those folks who weren't able to make it to that meeting and for the councilwoman who was not here, they had a state license, they didn't have a city license. They were unaware, New York didn't, they were unaware that they needed both, according to them. So we fined them for selling tobacco without a city license. But they provided documentation of their state license. And a copy of their, um, no, no, the receipt, the order of their supplier who's located...
The council has two applications before it, and there's one license available. And you can weigh the evidence before you and determine the ability of book application and make a decision as to which application is licensed.
I don't know if the manager can, the manager, sorry, the Colonel can speak on this now, but have there been any violations besides the one that we fined last meeting of either Rite Aid or New York daily in the last three, five years?
Colonel, I'm sorry, well, Rite Aid didn't have a license to sell tobacco, right?
They did.
Yes, they have, they do.
And there was no issues that I'm aware of, and I've been looking through, that they have sold or have flavored tobacco or any other issues with it. However, Joyce Mini Market, New York E-Market by 20th Street, there was another issue recently too, I don't know the date yet. It was on January 31st, where they didn't sell, but there was flavored tobacco products were available and visible.
So, Councilor...
The Negro?
Yes.
Councilor President, can we, can I, I want to, I'm going to make a motion to table both, until we can get a last three-year history on both companies, or businesses for the Police Department, because I think they're worth that.
Can you hear that? Move to the table.
I'm agreeing with the table, because there's two applications, and I don't know who applied first, and it's other information that we do not have. So it's better to gather every information to make a decision based on that.
Yeah, my initial instinct was to look at time. Both these applications were submitted at the same day, so that kind of goes out the window. The only thing I'll caution is the idea of double jeopardy. And so, one of our ordinances, I don't remember if it's the tobacco one, I think it is, says that after a year, your record is essentially clean. And so, to publicly admit that we're considering an offense committed three years ago or two years ago on your decision-making process would amount to punishing somebody twice for the same thing, which is...
I would say they weren't fined or there wasn't a penalty back then, so there's no double punishment. It's just a track record. I feel like when people are doing business, you need to look at their track record.
I probably have a motion to the table, both applicants, tobacco. Further discussion?
Is there a second?
I think I said we did. Franklin seconded, I believe.
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did. Will call vote.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
Councilor Acosta?
Yes.
Councilor Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilor Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilor Jose?
Uh, no.
Councilor Solano?
Yes.
Councilor Perry, just a second.
Thanks for your patience, however, we're just concluding it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to explain my no, not that I want to...
That's why, it's no, it's no, it's okay.
I'll...
It's just a table, it's just a table.
We should be acting on it tonight, Mr. Chairman, let's talk.
Thank you.
The next businesses, while we're at the decision section, is an entertainment license by a restaurant. 768 Grocery. There's no restaurant right here. Yeah, I guess I'm confused about this.
That's a different place.
I'm not sure.
That's a place I've never been.
That's okay, yeah.
Where's on La Casona? La Casona? I don't know. I'd like to make a motion to approve the entertainment license for La Casona.
Second. Their motion by Councilor Acosta, approved, seconded by Councilor Fonseca, to Councilor Solano and Councilor Figueroa. Any discussion?
I'll just say, I've been to a few events there recently. I'll be there on Thursday, watching the game. Do a really great job, they're really professional. Seems like they got the signature of the Police Department, two detail officers. I invite everybody to participate in our Independence Day celebrations. And so, lots of people come out and fun.
Anyone else? All of the papers signified, I'm saying, I tried, because I ain't doing nothing, seeing them, I just have it, thank you.
Next one is an entertainment and a sidewalk cafe license for A&amp;E 3 LLC, doing business as Lhasa Freestyle Restaurant. At 725, or 723, Broad Street.
Does everyone have the, the floor plan, I believe? I don't know the exact distance from the sidewalk, looking for that. Says nine feet.
So the business is Algonzo and Vings?
Yes.
I might be able to, so depending on what the question...
Yeah, I, I might be able to, so depending on what the question is. I'm, I know that they've, and Sonia has been working with the business owner as well. Um, I, I, I don't know if I can definitely answer, but I'll be happy to try.
But the question would be more for the chief, uh, police, uh, about, uh, this event is gonna be outdoor with drinks. Do they have a, uh, license for drinks?
They have a beer and wine.
Yeah, they have beer.
Uh, do you have any input about that?
I mean, a situation like that, we're gonna monitor it. It's, uh, it's not a, it's not a nightclub. They serve beer and wine, so I would, uh, we'd have not any problems with them up until this point. We wouldn't expect to have any problems within the future. However, if there are any issues, uh, you can guarantee that we will document it, send it to the city clerk and she will furnish it to the the legal department and to the, uh, the licensee for, for verification if so, if you so desire. If there's any issues with that, I, uh, we will document and we'll present it to you.
Yeah, I would also mention that this is very similar, their setup is to what, similar to what La Casa has. It's actually on their property. It's not utilizing the sidewalk at all, but considering our licenses work, uh, they're required to get a sidewalk cafe license, even though it's not really a sidewalk cafe, but it's on their property. So it's very similar to the setup that La Casa has where they'll be serving the products that they have indoors, outdoors, and an outdoor seating area. It looks nice, they've been working on the outdoor for some time now. And so, this is a food program to be able to use.
I'd like to see the language change tomorrow. I thought that cafe to outdoor cafe at some point. Avoid some type of confusion with people in the future.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, sidewalk.
That's not even on sidewalk.
They show a nine feet. Why, why using the term sidewalk? Yeah, it's scary to be outdoor.
I want to make a motion to vote.
Motion by Councilman.
Second.
By the vote, do you have a question?
Um, just in terms of the makeup, maybe you can answer. So, they're going to put a deck in place here. So, so they're taking away from the parking lot, correct?
Yeah.
So where, where's this parking gonna be? People have to go to one way?
That's not the parking lot. That is the space that is already closed. So it's, then the part, the deck, so it has to go from zoning, um, to, to the actual size. So the entrance is right here, correct? The entrance is over here. That's Broad Street. Yes, so the restaurant entrance is here. This is their parking lot over here. So this is just a patio that a butts, um, that is being, is currently unused. So the entrance is here, here. So then this is the parking lot? No, the parking lot is here. This is the building. This is the parking lot.
So I guess my question, the whole thing, the big area from the sidewalk to the end is a parking lot?
There is an area in front of the building that a butts is right here. This cross that is not being used by anything at the moment. It's a little patio and that's where they intend to put tables and the fire department has. So it's gonna be a number of tables based on their square footage. So that's why you have the same issue with the fire department on it. So it doesn't, and this is where the worst sidewalk sort of becomes a little confusing. It does not, not only does it not touch the sidewalk, it does not impact their parking.
So like La Casa is kind of in the back and it's, it's like blocked off? This is directly on the street and then the, La Supra's entrance is on the other side, right? So how are they going to be vigilant about serving alcohol right on the street if there's no blockage? I guess.
That's an answer that I can't, I, I don't know how, what they're going, what design they have. Their drawings did not, did not delineate a design for that separation, but that's something that we can ask and also.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my.
Yeah, so if I can speak a little bit, just from, from my understanding, I believe the plat, the, the space that La, uh, La Supra is going to be using is actually elevated anyways. Uh, so it's not on ground level with the, where the sidewalk is. It's elevated, uh, not, not too much, but it's elevated a, a little bit. Uh, and there's some flowers that they normally use to sort of like section it off. So if, it's not a full-out barrier, but there is something to sort of delineate the, the sidewalk and the public with those that are, that are resident. That, you know, I think it'll look sort of nice if you're driving by and you see people eating outside and.
So do you know, if, my last question, do you know if they plan on being open till one AM on the outside? Or just, they just put those out? Like, cause right now they get closed at like nine, ten o'clock. They're closed.
Uh, I, I, that's, I, I don't have.
Mr. Chairman. My understanding in this design is that no alcohol will be on city property. There will be, nothing will be on the sidewalk, both on the Foundry Street side or the Broad Street. But on the property inside from, inside boundary from that. Thank you.
I will vote aye. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Aye. Hearing and seeing, aye.
Back to the resolutions. Item D, resolution of the city, Central City Council supporting the action of the Second Amendment for Congress. Removal.
Don't explain why I do hope people come to the seven on July third, twelve o'clock, outside the city hall. Surprise guest.
What is being announced, Chairman?
Uh, the celebration of Fourth of July, but it's gonna be on the third because the city hall is closed after four. Same as in the past, yeah. We raise a flag and place the music.
Could I be sent a, provide a documentation on that, Mr. Chairman?
Documentation?
I didn't get a notice on that, so.
Oh, an invitation document, document what?
Some type of information, Mr. Chairman, since I haven't been notified of it. I don't receive email notification, Mr. Chairman.
It's a celebration of July fourth, but it's gonna be on the third because city hall is closed. We raise a flag, probably the Betsu Ross flag, it's for the colonies.
For time.
There will be a special guest on the revolution there.
Is that on time, right?
I listen to Brooklyn.
I signify by saying aye. Aye. Do you have a?
Next is our resolution in support of legislation H eight-two-four-three relating to towns. City central courts are very French of the.
Before we even start, I, uh, representatives here?
Yes.
I represent.
Thank you so much.
I understand the bills.
The budget's fixed.
The, the bills, you're no longer in session, the bill never made it to the floor.
I'd like to elaborate on the greetings from the General Assembly. President, members of the committee, uh, basically a lot been going on at the General Assembly. The good news is, uh, Accor Stadium.
That's a good news. That's a good news.
Hundred-six bills on Saturday night, Friday night, same thing. A lot of good things happened, two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond in reference, you know, to our schools. What an area, uh, first of all, Accor Stadium, a lot of kids from Central Falls are employed. Actually participating in the Accor Stadium. So that's a good thing. In conjunction with the eleven-million-dollar bond that we have, the radio station, all three of them, everything is gonna work out. What the, uh, uh, city protective face is now in redevelopment is the bonding. The bonding dish which, uh, I think they worked out. There's so many things I have to bring to your attention. Uh, this summer, we got summer intern programs. Getting on a board from the town clerk's office or something, the children that figure out tobacco to participate. It's a twenty, twenty-two week program, uh, for students, nineteen years, or ten college. There are two folk, uh, I, I can have, actually two people who would be at them. If anybody's interested, could, um, contact me, seven four one one eight three four. Getting back to the, uh, with the post, annual retirees. I would like, uh, at the beginning of the year, I spoke with the speaker, the two those that I had in reference to the ninety-nine retirees that we currently have, the state pay, uh, the money, the money. We had several meetings in finance, uh, and working with my finance chairman. The speaker has reassured us that he will be brought to full, uh, come reporting General Assembly. Next session in January. In January, uh, he wasn't born in New York.
Okay, so, so right now the bills don't exist, they never got to the floor. Uh, I'm gonna suggest we wait on the next General Assembly, we wait for the next city council if they want to support.
Right.
Uh, there's, there's no other way to do it. There's nothing to support right now. It never made it this year.
If I could, Mr. President, elaborate even further. The two bills that we currently had turned into a sub-aid, okay, the sub-aid, uh, the numbers will work out, you know, for the retirees. In reference to the state bearing responsibility for the debt themselves. These retirees, Olivia, uh, they're currently at seventy-five percent, we know that. Their pension will work from thirty-six thousand to twenty-eight, uh, they will cut down to twenty-eight. The spouse will only see sixty-seven percent of that month. Follow me. Basically, what is gonna, gonna happen is we're gonna revert back to the original forty grand corruption proceeding, which was the thirty-six thousand, okay, sixty-seven percent of the thirty-six thousand would be additional money for our ninety-nine retirees. Both along with increments of five-year periods and doing an amortization on that, okay? It was broken on a five-year increments, but it'll probably be currently extended twenty years. So, uh, as it approaches January, Mr. President, I will.
Right, there's no spoiling, I've been on this. Nothing to act on.
No, Mr. Chairman.
This is a ZAN, there's nothing to act on.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted it for introduction, for passage. I move to approve it.
Approve what?
Approve the resolutions, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the resolutions.
Congressman, I watched it. I appreciate you.
There is, I move to approve the resolution in support of the action, Mr. Chairman. It'll go on the record, Mr. Chairman.
He's trying to speak.
It'll go on the record. Congressman, uh, if it be committed for the resolutions, what I would suggest and advise that prior to, you know, the repair in the General Assembly, we take up a resolution, you know, uh, consider a resolution from the town council and I, I look forward to you, you know, to do this. The council will say it's put a lot of effort and I appreciate it. And, but with that said, uh, I look forward to the.
Next, I'll sort of that General Assembly.
The next General Assembly. And also, I would like a resolution, okay, in reference to, uh, my area of concern is with the bonding issue for the schools. As you know, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars, one point two billion over. But, as, as we draw closer to this, Central Falls is funded by the, you know, one hundred percent by the state, you know? And what I would like to do is to present a running on this line. A resolution to ride from, uh, the school department and the council. Seriously appreciate it because, you know, we have East Province, we have Providence. I just submitted a resolution, uh, a belt and, uh, a cumulus, eighty-three-million-dollar bondage. So the priorities that you have in Central Falls, I wanna make sure that they're part of that. Where the money goes. I wanna know where the state, uh, or Ryan's interest in is in, uh, getting to the forefront. East Province is gonna be building a new school. Providence, uh, Cumberland.
Lincoln.
Uh, Lincoln.
Yeah.
So all these, so we need to address this and, uh, you know, I look forward to, uh, getting the resolution from the school committee and Central Falls Town Committee, uh, you know, on this issue. I wanna thank you.
Thank you for all you've done, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the veterans' work. Thank you.
Uh, speaking of veterans, we have a new director, uh, kind of, uh, he does a great job, but also the House of Representatives has set up to reach out to every city and town, uh, veterans initiative. If you, uh, know of any veteran, uh, you know, that has problems compensation-wise, uh, medical facilities, please, uh, sit on veterans, please contact me, you know? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with that said, do you have any questions for the General Assembly, so I can.
Next year. Okay. We'll see you next year.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move passage of resolution in support of legislation H, uh, H-two-eight-two-four-three enacting to towns and cities, Central Falls retiree pension benefits, Mr. Chairman.
Never made the.
Passage. It is on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Next year.
I move passage.
Next council.
I move passage, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Do we have a second?
I move passage of resolution in support of legislation H eight-two-four-four enacting to towns and cities retirement of municipal employees, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second? Hearing and seeing, uh, resolution back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and compliments.
Next item is resolution of the courts, a council condolences and congratulations. Today we have two, uh, resolutions of condolences, both introduced by Councilman Lozere for the families of Karen D. Tori, who passed away on June second, and Raymond M. Duant, who passed away on June third.
Mr. Chairman, with, with, Mr. Chairman, with unanimous consent, I'd like to add the name of Doris M. Shagden, who died on June sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand what?
Two thousand.
Two thousand eighteen. June sixteenth. Doris M. Shagden, C-H-A-G. Move passage, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Motion to council by Congressman Acosta. Approved collectively, all. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Names, aye.
Next one is petition for use of Jinx Park.
Anyone yet?
No, I'm, I'm thinking of this change of location may have driven people up.
I move to approve, they do this every year.
Yeah, I did a second.
Second.
Motion approved by Congressman Fonseca, second, and Senator Solano will approve. Yes, I believe you have a good track record. Any questions? All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Aye.
And then the next item I, uh, which is the table presentation by the Department of planning and development.
And it's standing, the way.
Yes, I'm on to table.
Second.
Second by Congressman. They go to table presentation by the planning and economic development department. All who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing and seeing, aye. Aye. Next item, I report.
For an hour, approval of records, meeting minutes. We have three, June fifth, June eleventh, and June twelfth.
Mr. Chairman. I would first wish to point a border. As I have in the past, I will take action on the minutes, but prior to that, Mr. Chairman, I wish to object for the record. I will send this note. I will send this notice, but I will read it, Mr. Chairman, to you, Rob Ferry, City Council President, Matthew Jurisak, S.C., City Solicitor, Sonia Gray, City Clerk, J. M. Diosa, Mayor, Central Falls City Council Member, City Hall, 580 Broad Street, Central Falls, Rhode Island. Regarding city council meeting and agenda of 6:25, 18, notice of complaint and filing dear city officials, I hereby file another objection and complaint on the continual violations of the rules of the city council in the other city and state laws and rules. I have filed previously complaints and violations with the city council president, city solicitor, city clerk, and mayor, and have not yet provided a written legal opinion that I have requested and that the verbal opinion that I have been given is, I believe, incorrect and not based on law and in direct conflict of past practice. As a duly elected city council member, I ask that the opinions rendered by the city solicitor be reviewed by an independent legal counsel. One, I hereby complain that the city council meeting called for June 25th, 2018, meeting was not delivered to me until Tuesday, June 19th at 9:00 PM by the city clerk herself, and when it should have been delivered by Monday at 6:00 PM, clearly in violation of the rules of the city council, in a clear violation. Two, I hereby complain that since the special meeting of the city council of May 15th, 2018, called by Mayor Diosa, in violation of the rules of the city council without proper notification to the council members and without providing any agenda, budgetary documents, ordinances, and resolutions for introduction, and since I was not properly notified, I was not in attendance, this special meeting of the city council was later objected to me while the city clerk later admitted that no notice was provided to city council members, which is a clear violation of the city council rules as stated by the city solicitor. Three, I hereby complain that since the introduction of the annual operating budget ordinances and resolutions was not properly executed and introduced, and that since this introduction was not corrected and reintroduced properly at a legal city council meeting, then all subsequent city council action is invalid. Four, I hereby again complain that the June 5th, 2018, special city council meeting was held in violation of the rules of the city council by not providing proper notice to me as a city council member, and I contend that any actions taken at that illegal meeting should be known and void. Five, I hereby complain that the June 25th, 2018, city council agenda was amended with notice to the city council in public, with notice to the city council in public of less than 48 hours, notice a violation of the council rules and possibly the state or the feeding laws without proper correction. Six, I hereby complain that the ordinances and resolutions I submitted at the June 11th, 2000, city council meeting to the city council president, to the city clerk, to the city solicitor, and to each member of the city council.
Point of order, I'd like to make a motion to the debate, the councilman is now supposed to do four minutes and seven seconds.
I'm reading, he's speaking.
I'd like to rule it from the chair.
City solicitor and member of the city council, I am wrapping up.
Do we have a copy of it, please?
Yes, I'm finishing it, I'm gonna give you a copy.
We want a copy.
And each member of the city council signing.
Point of order, it's a red, it's spoken over four minutes and 13 seconds.
According to the rules, he is signing, I...
Get us a copy.
And with my understanding, it was my understanding, according to council rules, that these documents should have been included on the next council agenda. I again, in the midst of the debate, it's not a debate.
And a second, and a second, a narrative, a narrative.
I'm filing an objection, I am filing a complaint, I'm filing it on record, Mr. Chairman. I wish to file it, and I almost complete with it. Upon delay, seeing...
Move through the minutes of June 5th.
Second.
Resolution were excluded, and so notified the city council of my displeasure. This is a violation of the rules and personally and professionally discriminatory against me once again. Respectfully submitted to the full council on this public record by Thomas Azia, City Council Member, 1072 Lonzie Allen Avenue, my email and my cell phone.
Aye.
Respectfully submitted, Mr. Council President.
Thank you.
A copy will be provided.
Good enough, Mr. President.
Any good input?
Anything.
Mr. Chairman, I object to your action on the minutes. I wish to have my objection registered on the minutes. I reject it. I will provide you with the council. It's not a debate, I'm preparing my places.